Good afternoon. Supervisor Carpenter Harris will be about fifteen minutes late today. She's gotten a little bit of road traffic. So we will start with the proclamations first, but first we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we will start with Jill.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So today while we're waiting for Heidi, we're going to start with a couple of the proper couple of the proclamations that we have today. The first one will be, in no particular order, Connie Smith. Where is Connie? Come on up. It's your day. I'm gonna let you read your own thing. Connie, congratulations.
Thank you.
Relax. From heart, thank you very much. So we are recognizing the retirement of Connie Smith, Director of Behavioral Health Services. Whereas Connie Smith has served the County of Trinity with distinction as a Director of Behavioral Services, providing outstanding leadership and unwavering dedication to the health and well-being of our community. And whereas Connie's career in public service began in 2000 as the HHS Fiscal Officer in Lassen County, followed by her work as an administrator in business services in Madera County from 2002 to 2007. And whereas in 2011 Connie led the turnaround of Siskiyou County Behavioral Health Services, addressing $15 million deficit by completing over forty mock cost reports, ensuring the department's sustainability and continued operations. And whereas for the past six years Connie has served as Trinity County's Director of Behavioral Health Services, guiding the department through the challenges of COVID-19 pandemic, implementing telehealth services, expanding access to care in schools, securing grant funding for mobile crisis services, improving infrastructure, and creating workforce development systems to secure a professional self. And whereas Connie's exemplary twenty-five-year career in health and human services and behavioral health services has demonstrated her exceptional commitment to serving communities with compassion, professionalism, efficiency, while safeguarding governing laws and regulations. And whereas Connie's contributions have made a lasting impact on Trinity County, inspiring future generations of health professionals throughout her dedication to the field of behavioral health. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, on behalf of the residents of Trinity County, extend its deepest gratitudes and appreciation to Connie Smith for her remarkable leadership dedication and years of service to the community and the Behavioral Health Services Department. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors wishes Connie a well-deserved retirement, filled with joy, relaxation, and new adventures, and express heartfelt congratulations for her many accomplishments during her esteemed career, duly passed and adopted the eighteenth day of February 2025 by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. Connie, thank you.
And thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Just thank you to the Board and to the County of Trinity for the six years that I've had up here and the great team that I've had to work with. It's been a really rewarding time for me and we've helped a lot of people and I feel really good about the department and so thank you. It's been a great opportunity for me as well.
Thank you very much.
We have to pass the proclamation first.
Shall we take a vote on the proclamation?
I move that we approve the proclamation as presented.
I'll second that.
Second. Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Litwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Our next proclamation will be for Marcy Joe Kudzal. Whereas Marcy Joe embarked on her interprofessional career in nursing, graduating from Cal State Hayward with a bachelor's degree in nursing in 1990 and passing a nursing board exam in January of 1991. And whereas Marcy Joe provided critical care, trauma care, nursing as a registered nurse and as a mobile intensive care nurse in rural communities spanning 1990 to 2002. Whereas Marcy Joe performed as a certified instructor in Emergency Nurse Pediatric Core Curriculum and became a published author in the Journal of Emergency Nursing. And whereas Marcy Joe shifted her focus from trauma response in her yard to working in public health, advocating to improve public health initiatives, policy, and health outcomes for all. And whereas from 2002 to 2016, Marcy Joe leveraged her professional experience as a champion in public health in Calaveras County, managing all children's programs, including healthcare programs for children in foster care, California Children's Services, immunizations, lead poisoning prevention, child health and disability programs, childhood injury preventions, and participated in emergency preparedness and planning and pediatricians, as well as serving as a public speaker and presenter at several Departments of Healthcare Services, conferences related to rural public health, children's programs. And whereas Marcy Joe obtained her Master's in Public Administration in 2011 to better influence public policy, drive social change, and pursue leadership roles within public services. And whereas Marcy Joe progressed in her public health career when she embarked a leadership opportunity with Trinity County Public Health Team in 2016, bringing new insight and forward-thinking, honor-refulfilling, a commitment to serve Trinity County residents over the past eight years. And whereas Marcy Joe's unwavering leadership qualities and strength are best known and characterized as engaged, passionate, innovative, principled, resilient, compassionate, and dedicated. And whereas Marcy Joe showed us, her colleagues, the value of taking care of one another in the workplace, to see the best in people, to celebrate every success, no matter how big or small, leaning into her faith and trust in the journey. And now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity commends Marcy Joe Kudzal, Health and Human Services Public Health Branch Director, for years of dedicated service to the County of Trinity and does hereby wish her a happy and healthy retirement, duly passed and adopted this eighteenth day of February 2025 by the Board of Supervisors of Trinity County. Come on up.
I'm just taking this in. Be my last time here before you. I just want to say that I'm so thankful that Letty Garza hired me and that the Board approved that. This has been one of the best experiences of my life. I fell in love with Trinity County. I fell in love with all of you and with all the people. And there are no words really to express the depth of that love. Amazing public health team, ready to serve you. They love the people of Trinity County. There's so much I want to say, but I'm not going to be able to do that right now. I love that my director knows me and it's important to me that she put a line in there about my faith because God brought me here and I'm not going to be ashamed of saying that in an open forum because it's true. And I did the work that he wanted me to do. But along that journey, I learned an awful lot about myself and about others and about how to humbly serve. And I'll forever hold a place for all of you in my heart. And wherever I am in Calaveras, you're welcome. Come see me. Hopefully I can connect with you on Facebook and come revisit Trinity County. I need to be near my children and grandchildren. Yes. So thank you so much for the opportunity to serve and for all of Trinity County listening. I love you all. So thankful that I was able to serve you and the wonderful team at Public Health and my wonderful directors, Letty Garza and Elizabeth Hamilton.
I move to
Second. Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Litwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Okay.
There you go.
There you go.
A Marcy sandwich.
Okay, our last proclamation, not the least, is to Lance Florkey. Lance, are you here in the room? Come on up. You're gonna stay right there. Lance Florkey has served the community through his employment at the probation department since August of 1999. And whereas the Trinity County Superior Court acknowledges and thanks Lance for his years of service to the community and the courts. And whereas in recognition of Lance's commitment to professionalism, loyalty, and the to ensure that all people are treated equally in a safe manner with value. And whereas Lance worked for the probation department before it was even built in 2001 at the current location. And whereas Lance is known for his attention to detail in proofreading and formatting court reports. And whereas Lance led the Probation Officers Association as president for over five years. And whereas Lance advocated for Trinity County youth that were in out-of-home care to ensure they received every benefit and opportunity to be successful. And whereas Lance has been a witness to and is support for the successful implementation of the ever-evolving requirements of probation. And whereas Lance displays an inspiring ability to try any hobby and be an example of strength. And whereas his subordinates will miss the off-duty tennis matches, which remains undefeated, as he says. And whereas upon his retirement, he will be missed by his colleagues and employees. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity commends Assistant Chief Probation Officer Lance Florkey for his years of dedicated service to the County of Trinity and wishes him a happy and healthy retirement, duly passed on this day, eighteenth day of February 2005, by the Board of Supervisors of Trinity County. Now you gotta get in.
So I gotta say a few words apparently. Yeah, I'm not so sure I was undefeated. Come on. That was kind of nice of you, but anyway. Trinity County has been a wonderful place for the last thirty years to raise a family. And yeah, I was with the probation before there was a probation department, at least before that building in Oahu, Georgia. Folks I work with, I never once dreaded coming to work, not once, because I knew that no matter what happened, our small team would pull together and get the job done. So it's been a real pleasure to work with all of my probation mates over the years. So that's it. Yeah.
I would move to
Thank you very
I would move to approve this proclamation as presented.
I will second that.
Supervisor Litwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Now you gotta show that muds already now. Um, thank you.
Fair enough.
So Supervisor Carpenter Harris shows up and the room empties.
Look at that.
She's a sheriff girl.
Apparently we're adjourned for the day.
Holy smokes. That was a clearing of house.
Okay, we Historical Society presentation celebrated in Trinity County's 175th anniversary. Forward to this.
I'm Daryl Forzlin, Trinity County Historical Society. About a week ago, I guess it was, Trent sent me an email saying, gee, would you guys, the Historical Society be interested in putting something together for the celebration for Trinity County becoming a county on February 18th of 1850? And at that point, I thought, isn't that interesting? And I had seen some things about in town about some people doing some celebrations on that date, but it's just September of that year. So how do we have a county that was formed before the state of California is formed? So I thought I'd take a little effort to try to figure out what really happened. And it turns out that in that timeframe, I'm reminded of what purported to be a Chinese proverb, maybe live in interesting times. And I think we certainly do that now, but turns out that wasn't the Chinese proverb. But it is, you know, something to think about a little bit. And 1850, there was some interesting things going on in California and in the United States. So let's see if we can make this work. Come on. Maybe just see it. No. Not wanting to. Go ahead. Moving forward? Can you do it from there?
Oh, it's frozen. Okay.
I'm completely frozen.
Frozen up, huh? Well, we could kind of work through it a little bit. In 1850, of course, we kind of know that there was a California gold rush going on because that's why people were here. In 1848, the native population in Trinity County, or California, was about 150,000 people. Californians enlisted to 6,500 and Americans at 800. So at that point in time, before the gold rush, there was hardly anybody here from outside of the state of California. Should be able to move it from there. Put a slideshow and then I think I'm doing it now.
Are you moving it?
Yeah. So of course, gold was discovered January of, in 48, Fettersville. And that really changed everything for California. They said in 1848, the population of Americans was 800. In 1854, the population, not counting the Native Americans, was 300,000. So California was, you know, just growing by its ups and downs. And the country, you know, from Trinity County's mining history and stuff, we're all pretty familiar with that. But other things that were happening at that timeframe in Mexican-American War, 1856 to 1848, you know, 46 to 48, was fought over the annexation of Texas and the borders of Texas. Mexico claimed the river, Natchez River, to be the boundary between Mexico and Texas. And the US claimed the Rio Grande. They had actually offered $300 million to Mexico for the Texas Territory. And that was rejected and sort of that started the Spanish-American War. At the end of the Spanish-American War, which the US had won, they established something called the Treaty of Guadalupe Haldago, which basically annexed all of what we call California, Nevada, Utah, Arizona, New Mexico into it as a territory. And they paid Mexico $15 million for that. So now we have the US essentially owning the lands that are making up California. And at the same time, the compromise of 1850 was going on. Of course, 1850, we're dealing with the slave issues in the United States. And in 1850, they did some adjusting with things and essentially approved California as a free state. California wasn't exactly a state at that point in time, but that's what it was going to be designated as. Other things that were happening is a fugitive state laws were passed. They've traded DC, defined the north and west boundaries of Texas. As you can see on this slide, Texas looks like it does now. Back in the earlier slide, that's what Texas was, what they were fighting about for Texas at that point. But they, the treaty established the north boundaries and the west boundaries. And in this timeframe, 1846 to 1850, in 1846, the California bear flag revolt occurred, basically claiming California and independent republic of California. The treaty of Haldago, of Guadalupe Haldago, said that the existing laws would remain, Mexican laws, until there was a sovereign in the area. Fellow named Bennett Riley, who was the military governor of California at that time, basically ordered the printing of Mexican laws. So now what we have is we've got Mexican laws, which are significantly different than what we would call the American laws at that point in time. Mediation being a requirement in Mexican laws that didn't have to occur all the time in American laws. So we have these two legal structures going on. Legally, probably Mexican laws should apply, but the judges in the case weren't familiar with Mexican laws. They were familiar with American laws. And so we end up with essentially the situation of it being almost lawless. This is the cover of a document produced by the California Supreme Court Historical Society, talking about the fact that in fact, in from 56, 46 to 50, essentially that we were in a real state of unknown what the laws were in California because they were being interpreted differently in different locations. So in June of 49, this military governor Riley called for a constitutional convention. He thought that we should figure out some way to get some laws in California. So they did in fact establish a constitutional convention. Convention declared California to be a free state, established the border just east of the Sierra Nevadas because they wanted it, they wanted the mining activities in the Sierras to be in California. And to make California the state, not a territory. In December of 49, there was an election, statewide election, in 12,061 in favor, 811 opposed. So now we have essentially a constitution for the state of California, or for California, not yet a state, even though it says state of California on the resolution. It wasn't in November of 1849, it was not a state yet. Okay, well, so, and okay, 1849, we end up with California becoming a entity and with the counties of California being established. And of course, this is, this is the map of the first 27 counties. I would imagine this does, yeah, I didn't think that would work here. So Trinity County up in the northwest corner runs up to the Oregon border and to the So Trinity County up in the northwest corner runs up to the Oregon border and to the south of Mendocino County. And the, basically their watershed along the Chastiside there is where the boundaries were there. So Trinity County is established in 1850. Need some help here. But in 1850, there was no local government established for Trinity County. So so there was no elected officials. You had to go to Shasta County and Shasta for court activities. And it was, it was an entity, but didn't exist anyway. Locally, things like kangaroo courts were established. They actually had elections or voted some justices and constables in and that sort of thing, but they didn't have authority to do that, but they did in fact do that. In May of 1851, California basically said, okay, we want a free Trinity County from Shasta County administration. And we will hold an election to determine where the county seat is. The same time, May of 1851, actually both on the same day, Clamath County was established, which essentially, I'll go through this real quick here. Essentially is the north half of Trinity County gets established in the Clamath County at the same time. So at the time, you know, Trinity County was in a position to actually elect its officials and whatnot. It lost half of its territory. So here's another one of these interesting time things. The county seat was contested between Humboldt County and, well, it wasn't, it wasn't Humboldt County. The county seat was contested between the Union Town, which is now Arcata, and Weaverville, to establish what was going to be the county seat of what was then Trinity County. Weaverville won the initial election, but some late ballots came in from a place called Simpson's Hole, which is now what we call Big Bar, where there was 75 votes in favor of Humboldt, of Arcata. Turns out that there was actually only five residents in Simpson's Hole. So we had probably our first case of election fraud. Anyway, so that election actually got thrown out because in fact, they decided that somebody had stuffed the ballot box someplace. So then the, the local judge called for another election, did some things improperly, and so that election got tossed out as well. So in the third election, Weaverville finally did, in fact, win the position of the county seat. May 12th of 1853 approves the formation of Humboldt County, western part of Trinity County. So now we've got basically Trinity County being existing without doubt Mendocino, without Humboldt County. And we have at that point in time, and by now, of course, the state has been established and so we're going forward. Now we're kind of like, well, what happened to Trinity County? Because it certainly doesn't look like that map right there now. So this is an early map showing Trinity and Clamath. So that's the first breakup of it. Then, then between Clamath and Siski, Siski gets established out of the north part of Chastis County and part of Clamath. And then we have Del Norte comes out of Clamath County. So now we've got Del Norte, Clamath, Trinity and Humboldt. So in about 50, 74, this took a little bit of time. In 74, essentially, they determined that Clamath County was abandoned. It failed, essentially didn't have, didn't have enough finances to make it work and couldn't operate themselves as a county. So it did, in fact, wait until about 76 before they actually did away with Clamath County. Oh, oh, that was, is that the last one? Okay. Anyway, so now we have, we have Del Norte, Trinity, Humboldt and Siski. The line between Mendocino and Trinity got fought over a couple of times. There was two or three court actions reestablishing that line. Interestingly enough, because if you look at the original line of, south line of Trinity County, now you look at the south line of Humboldt County and let's see if I can get to this quickly here. You can't really tell there, but the south line between Humboldt and Trinity is not a single line. There's a jog in that line. And then upper part of Trinity County was in Siski originally, but that portion of, of this Cascade Mountains on our side in the Trinity Drain, he's got put it into Trinity County. So that's what essentially established the boundaries as it exists today. So. Anyway, that was kind of like, like, how did, how did California or Trinity County become a county before the state of California became a state? And then essentially, that's, they ended up by having a established entity. Really, one of the things that happens makes it easier for the US to deal with California, because at the time they were annexing it, it already had a constitution. It had already been established. So by, by September of 50, the California Constitution had been adopted in 49 and that sort of thing. So it was easy to make California a state. And of course, they were, the compromise of 1850 had to deal with whether it was going to be a free state or a less slave state. And they elected to make it a free state. So anyway, I thought it was a little bit interesting, the fact that we have February 18th of 1850 becoming an issue for the county of Trinity, when in fact, it wasn't even a state yet. So appreciate the opportunity to go through this. So it was, it was news for me too. So.
Darryl, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. I have to say, I was at CSAC board meeting last week and they have this one minute and say something about their counties. And five different counties were announcing that it was their 175th. And I'm sitting there thinking, what was going on back in 1850? And then I came home and saw your thing and I went, oh, gold rush was happening and okay, now that's, now it's making sense. Thank you, Darryl. Well, crazy.
Darryl, I have one question. When we went from that big boom, where did most of the people come from outside of the US or California?
Well, most of the people came from back east, but there were substantial foreigners here. I mean, when we look at Trinity County in that timeframe, there were, I don't know whether I would say most, but probably, well, I would say maybe most of the people, while they may have already lived in the United States, they had migrated to the United States. So they were not native born US citizens at that point in time. So we had Germany and, and everywhere. I mean, there's, and if, and if you look at, at the county at that point in time, there were areas like out, Indian Creek was mostly Portuguese. And then we reveal it was, it was mostly German and that kind of thing. So you saw, you saw these entities like that. So, but, but a lot of the people identified as being from a foreign country. And a lot of the stuff, we have naturalization records on most of those guys. And there's a lot of them were naturalized here before, after, after they got here. You know, so they weren't even US citizens when they migrated. So that you get here across the plains on a, you know, a stagecoach or covered wagon or whatever. You came across the Ismus of Panama by walk. You took a ship to Panama, walked across the Ismus, and then took a ship back up to San Francisco, or you went around the horn. And so the fastest way to get here was to go across the Ismus of Panama, even though you had to walk across the Ismus. But that was the majority of the people probably came that way, actually. So.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody have any questions for Darryl? We will now move on to the public comment portion. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. Want to address in the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate departments for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment in the room? Look at you.
Of course I do. Morning Chairman Gogan, Supervisors Vidette Vanderwyde, Lewis Tim. I'm here to follow up on my last public comment regarding the expansion of the cell phone towers and the dangerous electromagnetic frequencies they emit. My parents have already been notified since the last BOS meeting that despite the existing issues caused by the tower, expansion is moving forward. It's very disappointing, but this shows us Trinity County that once these corporations infiltrate our land, they take what they want with no accountability for the damage and they leave, that they leave behind. Now my parents are faced to spend their own money to defend themselves against a failed county process. From my experience working within the county, I've seen firsthand that the loudest voices and the deepest pockets get the most attention. Many in Trinity County don't have these resources, but I do. I got a loud voice and I intend to use my voice to raise awareness of these threats to our land and to our community. Frankly, this comment is for public awareness. An informed public is a powerful one. Therefore, I will use these opportunities to share evidence of why a countywide moratorium on all new tower permits until the failed process is addressed and the erosion to my parents' farm is fixed. Time is of the essence because they are coming. Did you know that they are working on installing 15 more towers between Humboldt and Trinity County? Only community opposition at this point is holding them up. We need to take a stand and we need to increase our education on cell phone towers. For the public's awareness, my parents lived next to this tower and they weren't even informed it was going in until it was already planned on, on the planning commission. AT&amp;T covertly got through this process and this is a scary, scary thing and it can happen to any one of you and any one of your properties. It's time County, Trinity County turns their focus to the real and environmental health threats these towers bring. My mom showed you the physical damage this tower caused her property last week. Moving forward, I'll be assembling a team of educators to present scientific peer-reviewed evidence on the medical dangers of these towers. We will show you the direct correlation between towers and the rise in mental instability, emotional imbalance and long-term effects this has on the body. The cumulative impacts of imbalance leads to disease and then destruction of the entity. The county moves slowly, but we don't have time to wait because we are all in the imbalance of these cell phone towers. This imbalance these towers created has already harmed our land and further expansion will only increase the damage and disease they create. We have a problem here. Let's work together to protect this county from any further damage before we face an even bigger, more expensive countywide crisis. This is our chance to be forward thinkers, Trinity County. This is our chance to see the bigger picture and practice an innovative process that many US towns and schools, school districts have already adopted. Please consider a moratorium on any future cell phone towers until we have this problem fixed. Thank you for listening.
Any other public comment in the room? On Zoom?
Adrian.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors and Staff. Yeah, I've got two items that are kind of interrelated. They both relate to the planning commission meeting that was postponed from last week until this one. I would imagine you guys are aware of it and I would say there's a fair chance it's going to end up back in these chambers. So I just want to make sure that the, that the county like uses the discretionary authority that it has in this sort of a hearing to try and find a solution and don't approach it as like a black and white ministerial pass fail situation for the licensee who's presently being denied his administrative buffer reduction. I'm certain that there's ways to, to figure out how to, how to keep this fellow in business and to solve the problem for him and hopefully for the, for the rest of the, of the licensees who may be going through this process in the future. Secondly, and interrelated, although Trinity County Agriculture Alliance will be presenting a list of recommended ordinance updates, very similar to the ones we presented in the past and still haven't seen any action on. I think it's really, really important, especially in this, in consideration of this planning commission hearing and the licensee being denied his ABR, that we consider adopting regulation that the state has that the county presently doesn't. It's known as fallowing, or I believe another term for it is limited operation status that allows a business to maintain its license while not being permitted to cultivate, but still being able to maintain genetic stock and their material from harvest that they're trying to get through the supply chain. So it can allow time to resolve issues around any given project without putting that person completely out of business and sending them back to square one, forcing them to relinquish all their stock, including their genetic material and their harvested cannabis and, and finding a solution to their problems before the problems become catastrophic. That's it for me today. Thank you.
Demetrio.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name's Tiffany Thurman. I live in Hay Fork. And I'm speaking to the board today about the dangers of the rollout of cell phone towers and wifi across Trinity County. I wondered if any of you knew that Verizon and other big tech companies advise their stockholders that insurance for injuries caused by radiation from cell transmitters is unavailable. That's right. Lloyds of London will not insure for long-term health damage for these companies. They tell their stockholders that, but they don't tell we, the customers. 5G and electromagnetic radiation is ranked as a high risk in the same category as lead and asbestos. This has a lot to do with the mountain of evidence and research that it's not safe. In 1971, what's that, over 30, 30 years ago, the US Naval Research Institute referenced over 2,300 articles listing over 120 impairments and illnesses attributed to radio frequency and microwave radiation. Thanks to a Freedom of Information Act's request, extracts from published US Defense Intelligence Agencies documented and confirmed this danger stated, and I quote, "If the more advanced nations of the West are strict in enforcement of these stringent exposure standards, there could be unfavorable effects on industrial output and military functions." It was suggested that governments choose a safety level compatible to industrial outputs, outputs and military function. The governments that adopted the thermal level only, which is their only testing for thermal heating, denied and still to this day deny any adverse effects from sub-thermal levels of radiation. In 1975, the US Defense Intelligence Agency warned all of its personnel of the risks from low-level microwaves, including illnesses ranging from microwave sickness, flu-like symptoms, depression, sleep disruptions to cancer and leukemia. It looks like she just dropped off.
Do we have any other on Zoom?
No.
Lisa, did you have something? Let me know if she comes back on there.
Good morning, Lisa Wright-Lewisson. Just to kind of dovetail Adrian's comment about the fallowing or the non-operational status, limited operation from DCC. Cultivators pay a 20% fee of their regular license fees. So if we would do some a thousand dollar placeholder for them to continue perhaps with their next renewal to be able to actually farm again. So we wouldn't lose them altogether from the program, but it will allow them to go into that non-operational status and hopefully, I kind of equate it with like, that's from my days at the Justice Department, with like bankruptcy, chapter 11, reorganization, right? It gives them an opportunity to kind of stay the, some of the fees that they owe, but not completely lose everything that they've done, because they'll have to do reapplication and go through, you know, and go through, you know, initial fees and analysis that they've already done. So I would encourage you, as that comes out, to, you know, potentially embrace that here for Trinity. I think it would be very beneficial. Thank you.
Did Tiffany come back on?
No.
We have no other public comment? We will move on to reports announcements, reports from department heads. We have none? Reports from CEO? Chatto.
Thank you Chair. Couple of items. So the county newsletter that was put out and will be put out again monthly, I just encourage anyone who is interested in that to sign up and you'll get that automatically sent to you. I attended the Trendell Board of Directors meeting on the 5th of February down in Sacramento. There are, I'd say, some trends among the Trendell counties in like general liability and workers' compensation and the, the training efforts are going to be focused accordingly, not just, you know, specifically for Trinity, but across the Trendell counties, the 12 Trendell counties. The board also authorized to leadership position hires. And then just for your awareness, we're continuing working through the recruitment of a new executive director for Trendell. As you're all aware, the Housing Element Special Board Meeting was canceled last Thursday due to the, the power outage throughout the county. We are working, reschedule dates and times for that and we'll let you and the public know as soon as we have that solidified. And next month is Women's History Month. I had sent out an email to the board, all, you know, BCC'd and asking for input. There was support for this, so we will move forward with using next month as an opportunity to recognize individuals from your districts who you would like to nominate. I'll follow this up with an email and kind of some timeframes associated with it, but we'll do it at the second meeting in March to allow for some time to, you know, to appropriately compass and select members from, from your, a member from your district who you want to recognize. So I will follow up with an email on that. And I'll wait for the ad hoc update at that point in time. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Reports from members of the board? Start with Julia.
Upcoming are my town halls. So I have a few meetings this next week. I have, I'm headed down to the Sacramento new supervisor training, so I will be down there to do that this week. And I'm excited to do my town halls. I think this is going to be a really wonderful thing to talk to my communities and find out what they are, are wanting to do and how I'm doing and, and go forward with them.
Jill?
February 5th, I met with Ryan Richardson, Superior California Economic Development Executive Director, and Alec Domka, Trinity County's UC Cooperative Extension Representative, where Ryan shared with us seven kind of large things that are happening within SCED, things, opportunities that they do provide for people and ways by which they are working on our behalf. One or two of them were so cutting edge, he couldn't even tell me the outcomes yet. So I am excited about that and would ask that Supervisor Lewiston provide those updates for us as those cross the finish line. I'm sure that you will share those with us. Anxious to hear. It was also great to have Alec ask Ryan ways by which he, as our UC Cooperative Extension Representative, could partner with him. And Ryan did have a couple of things that he could use some assistance on. Alec shared that he has just gotten in Delnor County and is ready to turn his attention to Trinity County. So appreciate those efforts on our behalf. February 6th, we did have our homelessness ad hoc meeting. Let's see, I reported out about that. February 10th, at the Fire Chiefs meeting, I was tasked from that homelessness ad hoc to approach that body with a particular ask, which as anticipated was favorably received. And again, we'll hear about that when that time is appropriate. And then the community stakeholders meeting, I did attend and good to hear how those folks partner together with some ways by which the community can be served with things they may not be able to do on their own. And we will look to our PIO to forward those pieces of information to our community. End of report. Thank you.
Supervisor Lewiston?
Yes, regarding our tourism matter that we'll be discussing later, I met again with Representatives from Civitas, getting a draft agenda pulled together for our first meeting and just laying out some of the next steps. So looking forward to us working through that later today. Sierra Nevada Conservancy, I participated in the board orientation, even though I've been appointed to that board for a while, I wasn't the active voting board member. So now going through an orientation process for that and a fairly in-depth ethics certification that's required for that specific role. The Lewiston Community Association, which is one of those groups that we awarded some tourism funding to, participated in their annual meeting where they were discussing the use of some of those funds. They haven't received them yet, but they are working toward that. They've provided information to the county. Mentioned earlier, but CSAC, we had our board meeting in Sacramento last week and I did have an opportunity to meet with the CEO and the President to discuss ways, basically to optimize the impact of our participation in CSAC for rural counties like ours. And so again, we use the homeowners insurance survey and, and transportation issues and so forth to highlight how we have different needs than San Diego County, LA County, and so forth, and, and then talk through how we might be able to work more effectively together on that. I think one of the things that was interesting out of that is that the whole, you know, we live in the political world, that's, that's our role. And basically acknowledging that without the votes that come from those larger counties, CSAC can't really get behind anything. You know, because if it won't go through, then it won't be carried out. So that we have to work with them, but it doesn't mean that we have to be only focused on their needs. And so it was just an interesting lesson. SCED, as I mentioned, which is the economic development group for our region, provided, I provided them a strategic plan draft this last week that we will be discussing this week. That was a draft strategic plan that I pulled together based on input I had gathered from the board and staff in previous meetings and via survey. So we will be finalizing that and that might be part of what Ryan was referring to in, in terms of things that we are saying that we want to commit to and prioritize as we move forward. The Behavioral Health Advisory Board, I'll have my first meeting of that on Wednesday. And on the homeowners insurance that I mentioned earlier, I did reach back out to the Fire State Council because I didn't want that to just drop. You know, we said we would do follow-up and so I wanted to know how would they like us to do follow-up? And so they are working on a letter. At that point, they will determine, do they want that letter to come out from them or would they like it to come out from us? And also who all they think that letter should go to. That doesn't preclude us from doing anything. I just wanted to let them take the lead. So I'm, I will be following up again with Skylar and the team and we'll figure out how we're going to move forward, but I should have something soon. That's it.
Ready?
Thank you. I attended via Zoom the NACO RAC meeting and it was, we had a nice presentation from Flabs and they are working on ways to increase, let me make sure I'm using the right words here. They're making, they're, they're working on ways for rural areas who have, to have more tradable income and diversified tradable incomes for small, for small rural counties. And they've done a really nice study up in Wyoming and I think that some of the things they discovered and some of the ways that they are putting together systems and structures for small rural counties to find more ways to increase and diversify income would be very, very helpful for us. I was going to share some of that on a greater level with Rick at some point. And then also, we were introduced both at the RAC meeting and at the Public Lands, Public Lands meeting to the new, the new person Gregory Nelson for National Center of Public Lands Counties. And Trent, do you know, do we, do we, do we participate in that or in the National Center for Public Lands Counties? It's another additional organization that will fight for ours. So that's something we may want to consider. It, it's roughly 1% of our ARPA funds can put us into, into that umbrella of their support. So that's something to, to think about. They, they fight on another, from another level and, and from another vantage point for public lands counties, which we need all the help we can get. So also during the public lands meeting, I'm happy to say that LaMalfa is going to be bringing the PILT and SRS funds to the floor of the last I was updated. So unless anything's changed on that, he's gonna, he's going to, to lead that. My intentions when I'm in DC later this month is to meet with him and let him know that Trinity County needs him to push with all of his might, as well as any other senators or representatives that can get that through the whole of Congress. During the Public Lands Committee, we were brought forward some of the proposed resolutions that NACO will carry forward into committee. One of them is an interim resolution encouraging federal land management agencies to utilize existing studies to promote efficient siting of infrastructure projects. So the idea around this is to be able to not have to redo studies and sites where studies have already been done, but allow us an amount of time that says this is negotiable. It's still, nothing much has changed. We should be able to move forward, especially for county infrastructure and, and roads work, different things like that. So that's interesting. We'll see if it gets pushed through. And then also a proposed interim resolution on the allowance of mechanized equipment as appropriate in wilderness area for the S4 service. The idea is to be able to cause and other small equipment in areas where it's appropriate in, in wilderness areas to open up trails and access to some of that wilderness country. Part of the problem is it just is so impacted by falling trees and different things that all of the wilderness counties that hold wilderness area aren't allowed to have access to a lot of that public lands because you just can't get it cleared with hand saws. So that's going forward. I, I signed my name to that as part of the sponsor group. And then another is an interim resolution on wildfires and how they impact counties across the nation. It calls Congress to streamline environmental review for federal lands that interface with urban areas. So they're looking at trying to be able to do a lot more work right on that buffer between private land, county land, state land, and the federal, and federal lands. Additional resolution that I concurred with was a proposed interim resolution for funding transportation planning and programming in rural counties with major recreation. And that looks at the amount of, of burden that county roads carry in order to get folks to those, those natural parks and, you know, trailheads and different things. And it's a request that the federal government recognize and help us to maintain those roads that lead to those federal locations. So that is what I have been working on with public lands and being part of those meetings in addition. And with that, I'm going to be in NACO. I'm leaving on the 27th, so I won't be here for the first meeting in March because the schedule overlaps with the NACO meeting, just so you're aware. And I want to just say to my district that I am receiving and making requests known to our roads department about the roads of your concern. And I understand that with this weather, we're kind of in a really, we're in a situation here. My road has been heavily impacted and I know other people are dodging rocks and, and slides under their roads, over their roads, down trees. But I do want to say I am grateful for our roads department for doing what they can with the little resources that they have. And I appreciate that they put themselves in danger to make sure that we have thoroughfare. I attended the Sunungwe General Counsel Meeting on Sunday, both as a tribal member, but also as a, as a board member. I'm continuing my work with them and the Noromak to finish the letters to support them by us recognizing them and their attempt to move forward with their recognition by the federal government and acknowledgement. I want to say to my district and, and to the folks in general, I am in need of a planning commissioner. So if anyone in my district has interest in this, I would be happy to receive your letter of interest and have a meeting with you to try to place a new planning commissioner for my district. So please reach out to me on my email is generally best. But other than that, I think that's, that's what I've been doing the last two weeks for the Board of Supervisors.
Busy girl, aren't you?
I have three other jobs, so yes, I am very.
Very good. Well, thank you for everything. I did attend the same ad hoc homeless encampment meeting that Jill reported out on, I think it was the 5th, Jill, is that correct? And then, it was the 5th? And then later in our agenda today, we'll be talking about the tourism improvement districts. I also had a town hall meeting on the 20th, well, a couple of weeks ago. And I'll have another one 26th of this month. And strangely enough, the topic of cell towers was the main issue that we spent most of our time talking about. And I will admit that I am woefully undereducated on the whole cell tower issue. So I will need to get up to speed on that. It never even struck my head before these meetings, so here I am learning along with everybody else. And I just want to say I do have another town hall meeting on the 26th at the Roderick Center, 6 o'clock in Hayfork. And that is it for me. We will now move into the consent calendar.
We have to do the ad hoc.
CEO Chatto.
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the ad hoc, I will give a quick update. We did have a meeting on February 6th. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 6th at 1:00 PM in this room. At the February 6th meeting, we reviewed the Crisis Tracker, which will more than likely be the platform we use to track encampment locations. It's not specifically designed for this type of effort, but there are enough features and capabilities in that platform that it should, it should work for our use. And since we already use the platform for other OES functions, there's no additional cost. The Volunteer Fire Department Chiefs have, has agreed to help provide information on encampment locations and will incorporate their information into the, the tracking mechanism. There are some camp visits that are going to happen that, as I reported out last time, are being led by our probation department, but it is an entire group type of effort. They are just the ones who stood up and were willing to, to lead the effort. So one of those should be happening shortly. That will not be an announced type of visit, but it will occur. The Trinity County Sheriff's Office is also using any available, you know, patrol time or any just opportunities that they have with their limited resources to show some additional law enforcement presence to the areas that have been identified. There's also some community outreach type of information that's in development. HRN and our PIO team are leading that effort. There's a draft ordinance that There's a draft ordinance that is in the works. I've seen the initial draft and it's a great start. There's some minor adjustments that are being made to it. And it should be ready for the full ad hoc to review at our next meeting on the 6th. On February 10th, staff and CAL FIRE walked the three county-owned parcels here in Weaverville that are known for some of these encampment locations. We agreed to the project scope and the fuel reduction and vegetation management efforts that, that are needed on those, those parcels and what the CAL FIRE crews can do. And based upon weather and when the crews complete one other project they've got ongoing, they're going to start on our project. It should be within two weeks. I just got a email this morning from CAL FIRE and things are looking, looking positive to get the crews out on our, our locations. Looking forward to that. And that's all I've got for the update.
Thank you. And I just wanted to thank the community for their patience during the last few weeks of our storms, power outages, cell outages, slides, road closures, everything else that we went through. Kind of a shout out to the DOT for keeping our roads as clear as possible. It was a pretty wet year so far. Let's hope it keeps on going. We will now move on to the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters that will be acted upon by the board by one rule call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on any item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any items that would like to be pulled from the consent calendar? I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated. Excuse me. Public comment first. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? Any on Zoom?
No raised hands.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
I will second.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Litwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
We will now move on to county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Do we have any requests to pull one out of order? Do we have any public comment?
Public comment on the first item, you mean?
Say one time.
You're, you're asking for public comment on the first item?
I am. On E1.
Do we need to read?
Hey, E1.
Do we need, yeah, go ahead. I thought, I thought we needed to read it in before the public comment.
We do need to.
Do you want me to read it?
We just need to, we just need to introduce the item, yeah.
One more time?
Yes, we need to introduce that item if that.
Okay, E1. County Administrative Office, discuss and/or take action to appoint Tourism Development Advisory Board members. No fiscal impact.
Okay, I'll do a quick intro here. So just for, to get any members of the public in, in the board on the same plane level. Bylaws for the Tourism Development Advisory Board have been approved by this board. Advertisements for vacant appointment positions to serve on the advisory board were put out as they're normally put out on our website and on the public board, public bulletin board at the, at the courthouse. In addition, the Attorney Journal on their own, in, in essence, did run a short article and an opportunity just for awareness on, on the, the potential for positions as well. We did receive letters of interest as they're outlined in the, in the board report. So this item is for the board to discuss any of those appointments. And if all these positions are appointed, we should have a quorum and to be able to move forward, even though there was to be some, some quote vacancies, but we should have a quorum and continue and be able to continue the, the forward movement on this topic.
May I ask a question? CEO, Trent? Or you have a?
Did you have a question?
So I have a candidate that may be available. We haven't gotten really through to him yet. He had expressed interest. So the time is okay to continue pursuing him to get that, to get him on the commission? Or, or is this the closed?
No, 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 absolutely. The, the time is still, that, that will be a vacant position for, for District 5.
Okay.
And it'll remain vacant until such time that, that you bring forth a
Perfect.
A candidate. And then once that's brought forward, we, we'll put another agenda item on and the board can support the appointment hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
No.
I do have one question just to make sure before we go forward. County Council, I don't know if, if you were able to look at my notes that when I read through the bylaws, there were a couple of things. One was, I think I read that the chair was to appoint not only two people to that board, but also of chair and a vice chair. So that's probably something we still need to do. And I don't know if we can do that now or if we have to bring that back to an agenda item. But the other thing was I saw information about noticing of meetings, but I wasn't clear on participation, virtual participation in the meetings, which I hope, since I'm the one who put those bylaws forward, I didn't box us in, but I'm hoping that we can have people participate virtually, even if we physically hold a meeting here or wherever, but people could virtually participate.
Yes, and I appreciate you reaching out ahead of time because I do have an answer to that. So it is covered under the Brown Act. You don't need to put additional regulations in these codes because the Brown Act already states them. So the Brown Act rules on remote appearances will still apply. There's two mechanisms to do remote appearance. The first one is the one we utilize where you actually notice an alternate location, which can be home, which can be another location. And the other one is for emergency items. So if somebody's got business that kicks them away from home, an illness, a sick child, something of that nature, there's a mechanism to use them as well. Those are all under the Brown Act. And since this is a Brown Act committee, those apply.
Okay. And I think with supervisors, isn't, doesn't it also go further to say there have to be real exceptions for doing that, say from home and it can only be done twice a year or some such thing? I'm just, I hope I didn't box us in too hard.
So you're correct. If you're using the emergency item. So the emergency item is where you, where somebody has an emergency that prevents them from being there.
Okay.
The, the two rule actually is not there anymore, but there are some limitations on that. But the remote appearance exception that has always been in place even pre-COVID still remains, which is if somebody wants to appear remotely, they're able to as long as the majority of the committee is on location and the alternate locations, wherever they are, is noticed as an alternate location. So that can be utilized as many times as you need, as long as there's a majority within the jurisdiction.
Okay. So when we, and we're talking about having meetings every couple of weeks for six months. So we it's 72-hour notice to get the agenda out. What we would need to do is reach board members in advance and say, this is when we're planning to meet. That's actually supposed to be done at every meeting is scheduled the next meeting. And say, where, where will you be for it? Make sure we're going to have enough people physically here. And then include in the agenda posting that we do, who's going to be not here and where will they be? Okay. Because I just, as we're about to approve all these people, I don't know if they knew what they were signing up for because they're not used to having to deal with what we have to deal with of appearances and so forth. And I guess the last question is, did that need to be a meeting or a, a bylaws that establishes under Brown Act?
No, you don't need that in the, the bylaws. You establish it as a Brown Act committee. And as a Brown Act committee, all the rules under the Brown Act apply. I think your next question is can, can we limit that through our bylaws and make it so that everyone can just appear remotely? And the answer is no, because it is a Brown Act committee, you've got to follow the Brown Act and we can't amend that through bylaws. So because it's a, a public noticed meeting, we have to follow the public notice requirements set up under the Brown Act.
And it, and it, I guess the other question is, it needed to be a Brown Act or that's just the way I put it forward?
Uh, yes, the way it's set up needed to be a Brown Act.
Okay.
It's an ongoing process. It's not limited in duration, limited in scope. You do have members that are being appointed to it. It, it falls directly in what a Brown Act committee would be. So we did it correctly.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure as we sign folks up, we know what we're getting into.
Do you like to schedule these meetings ahead of time every two weeks as we start our first meeting? And so everybody can kind of have a forward look at things.
Yeah, well, the, the way I read the Brown Act, or I mean the bylaws, was that it states that we will choose our next meeting date during the meeting. So we can, once we get all these members, we could reach out and establish our, or we could say when our first meeting is going to be. But then at that, from that point forward, every board meeting, we will be deciding on the next one. So that, that's how we'll go forward. And then what was the answer, County Council and Chair, Vice Chair?
So that wasn't noticed today, so I would recommend doing it the next meeting.
Okay. So yeah, we just need to formally do that. And, and again, I read it as this chair needs to assign a chair and vice chair. And then there will be these other board members. So it needs to happen, but it needs to happen in the next board meeting.
That's correct. I believe you can move forward with scheduling the meeting, get everything set up. We'll just do that formal appointment at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Do we all have some members that we would like to put forward? Not right now, but have we all got to that stage where we've?
Yeah, we have, we have, we have someone from all districts, but District 5, correct, to approve today?
Yes.
Okay.
I am prepared to bring my person forward for approval. So.
So I guess at this point, we've, we've presented it and we had our questions. We still need public comment and then we can vote on those people that have been submitted. Is that correct? Okay.
Do you have public comment in the room? On Zoom?
Adrian?
Hey, thanks again. Just a real quick question. Will the names of the nominees be read prior to the vote? Just a question. I don't know. You can't answer that directly, but maybe something could happen.
Could you restate that, Adrian?
I think he's just wanting to know if we could read the names of the people that we're voting on before we vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that correct, Adrian?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, sir.
Very good.
They are also in the backup data, if you would like to look at them.
I guess the one point that I would like to bring to public attention, just from the perspective of my district, and we can have council confirm my supposition. And that is that the person that we appoint to that seat needs to physically reside within the district. Would that be correct?
Let me double check the, the bylaws. I believe that is correct. But let me double check the bylaws because I don't remember that exact.
At this time? When I was reviewing it, it was, seemed gray as to is it the business that needs to be in the district or the residents in the district? Because those might not be one in the same. In my district, I don't have to worry about it. I'm fine. It's both. But it was a.
But I did encroach on that gray area.
Yeah.
Thank you, supervisor.
Anybody have one that falls into that category?
Yes.
You're due.
One moment. I'll, I'll pulling it up right now.
While she's looking, do we want to read the names of those from the?
I think each one of us should say our person. Is that okay?
We'll start with District 1.
Oh, that's me.
That's you.
Okay. District 1 is Leah Groves, who was before this group a few weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago, as a representative of the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. She is also involved in the ownership of the winery in the North Lake area, so District 1. And so I think she will be a great representative because she is already involved in economic development, is involved in ownership of a business that is tourism affected and has the working relationship with Siskiyou, who has introduced theirs back in 2015 and now generates well over a million dollars from their program. So I think, I was thrilled that she was interested in participating.
So for District 2, I did have two interested parties, Ryan Crockett and Trish Harris. Both are successful business owners. Ryan owns Up North. And Trish was the owner of the My Revival Boutique and is starting the Trinity Adventure Hub. But in accordance with the way that I read the bylaws, which we are now checking, I thought that the individual needed to reside within the district. And so for that, submitted Ryan's name for approval today.
And I can clarify, I'm reading it. It, the only provision that talks about residency is the business owner section. And it says, a minimum of 50% of the advisory board shall be owners of businesses located in the Trinity County and that benefit directly from tourist development. So I don't believe that you are required to have the individual also reside. But let me, I'm trying to see if there's any other provisions that speak to it and I don't see any.
Should we move on? Margaret, why you look?
You can, but my, my initial reading is that the business must be in the district and that's the exclusive issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
District 3 would be Dana Hauser. She's a Chamber of Commerce for District 3. She's a resident of District 3 and a business owner. She would do a fine job and she's looking forward to her, her job there. District 4.
District 4 brings forward Dana Stenhauser. She is the co-owner and manager of Trinity River Rafting since 1995 and has participated in a plethora of events that bring tourism to my district along the river, sponsoring and working on all kinds of events over the years. She is very active in her community and I am very proud to bring her forward for this board position.
District 5.
I am waiting on the person that I'd like to, to put in that position. And I think they'll be wonderful. They are, they've been in the community a very long time and have owned businesses that have been very successful. So I hope that they will do it.
So have forward to the 5. Do we take a vote on this or not?
Yes.
Chair? Public comment?
Oh, I do. Take a public comment from Zoom?
Ben?
Ben Kellag, we're all, this is an outstanding list of people. And I encourage this to breeze through. I'm excited. I think these are going to have a lot of fresh ideas and hopefully increase tourism within the county. Thanks.
Yes, you can vote on them now. Again, you can make nominations for the remaining one at a later point. And I did read the entire bylaws. And again, the only provision related to residency is that the business has to be as part of the district.
And yet there was an additional provision there that said it was preferred that the individual owned a business but not required, correct?
That's correct because only 50% of the business of the committee has to be business owners. So again, in hearing the nominees, appears we do have that. Appears I think we have 100% are business owners. But you can have individuals who are not business owners as long as they're not the, the majority.
Okay.
Then they would have to be resident of the district.
I would recommend that, yes. It doesn't specifically state that, but that appears to be the intent, is that they have ties to the, to the district.
Okay.
Did you, you, you read both, but did you state your, who we're voting on?
I did.
Okay.
Yes.
Everybody.
It listed there in the backup data. It would be Ryan.
Right. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
We do have one more public.
Public comment?
Oh, can we continue to take?
Well, we, we jumped in before we close. Public comment, I think, is the problem.
He put his hand down.
Oh, no, he didn't.
Jeff?
Yeah, Jeff Morris, Weaverville. Just interested in the difference between the advisory board and the district. I'm hearing those terms being interspersed and just want to get some clarification on that.
I didn't, Doc.
I don't understand the question.
I didn't either. Can you, Jeff, can you say that one more time?
Sure, I can restate. So I'm, I'm hearing. So I'm, I'm hearing folks say, a advisory board, which is, sounds like what this item is, but they're also saying the word district is also being used to describe this situation. And they're being, it sounds like they're being conflated somewhat. I just want to get some clarification on which is which and which comes first.
Go ahead.
So the advisory board is made up of two members assigned by this board and then one person from each district appointed by their supervisor and approved by this board. Hopefully that clarifies.
Thank you.
I do think as well, Jeff, if I can jump in, that the bylaws are included in the backup data, if that helps you, if you would like to look that into that more deeply. And if not, this one, they're on the previous one.
I did see those. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, you're welcome.
So now we're closing public comment? Are we done?
Any other public comment?
No raised hands.
Finally.
Did you have something?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion forward the list of folks that have been chosen by their board of supervisors in their districts to be on the Tourism Advisory Board. Would you like me to read their names or are we fine?
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve those who have been presented for the advisory board.
I will second that.
Supervisor Litwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
So Chair, if I might, County Council, just one thing to make sure, because to schedule a first meeting, I need to talk to everyone, which is talking to everyone, which is the majority, but we're not talking about business. So just arranging the meeting, that's not a problem. I can reach out, lock down a calendar date and time. And then from there on, we'll have all those discussions in the board meeting, correct?
Correct, that would not be a problem. You are allowed to do logistical communication.
Thank you. What a dance. Yep, thank you.
Okay, E2. Human Resources, take the following actions for the District Attorney's Office. One, improve the job description, set the salary ranges and add to the alphabetical listing of classifications a paralegal one at range G202 and a paralegal two at range G212. Two, modify the department's allocation list for the District Attorney to read for administrative clerk 12 senior, legal secretary 123 senior, or paralegal 12 and 3, approve a side letter agreement with the general unit adding the paralegal classifications.
Good morning, Chairman Gogan.
Good morning.
Supervisors of the board. This is actually a very long time coming. And even more essential, because we are having people in the department actually become licensed. And so we'd really like to move this forward in order to give more opportunities for advancement